Okay, welcome everybody. We do not have a chair or vice chair yet, that will be later in the agenda, but I'm going to start off the meeting. You would all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ready to begin? So I'm gonna start with a little differently. I'm gonna do an introduction of staff and then we'll turn it over to our board to introduce themselves and then we'll begin with the formal meeting. So I'm Michael Garcia, I'm the Community Development Director.
I'm Bianca Surit and I'm the Recording Secretary for Community Development Agency. And I will start the meeting by taking roll call. Board Member Luis Mier. Board Member Esperanza Martinez.
Yeah.
Board Member Tracy La. Board Member Ernie Aguilar.
Here.
Thank you. We have quorum and now we can start with the meeting.
So can we, can we begin by starting with the, with the training that Cindy Blot is going to provide?
Want the board to introduce themselves?
Hi, I'm Ernie Aguilar. Thank you for having me and excited to serve on this board.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Esperanza Martinez and I'm representing the Mobile Home Community Tenant.
How do I get the PowerPoint up there? As I mentioned, I'm Cindy Blot. I'm with RSG, we're the consulting firm that the city has contracted with. We've been working on the city, we're with the city for about three years now on the ordinance from its inception to now its full-on board development. So we have a lot to cover. We have a big binder in front of you, so I'm going to reference a lot of the materials in the binder and at the end of your wait and hold your questions until the end, I think we may cover a lot of those, but again, there's a lot of material, we're gonna cover a lot of the basics today. So can we start at slide one? Perfect. Okay, so now we are doing the Rental Housing Board Work Session. Before you can conduct any business as a board, you have to elect your officers, you're gonna do that later today or after this work session, but we thought you'd like some training about the board and what your responsibilities are before you elect your chair and your Okay, so we have a lot, as I said, we have a lot to cover today. Everything on the slide, we are going to cover just the basics and again, you can ask questions later, but your binder contains all the detailed information you're gonna need to do a little research on your own. We can't cover it all tonight or we'd be here all night. So we are gonna go through the background of the ordinance, the purpose, your powers and duties, membership responsibilities, the meetings, rules of procedure as a board. I don't know how many of you have served on boards before, but Robert's Rules of Order just need to be revised as well as the Brown Act, we'll go through that. Petitions and appeals and hearings we'll cover briefly and then we'll go through some of the resources in your binder. So before we get started, any questions? Okay. So I'm gonna go through a little bit of the background of the ordinance. So originally, the city passed two ordinances, a rent stabilization ordinance and a just cause eviction ordinance. And that worked for a little bit, but it really was quite confusing because some of the rules overlapped. So City Council voted to condense those into one big ordinance that covered everything. It also made things easier on staff and us as consultants to help develop some policies and procedures for these ordinances. So the ordinance essentially limits the rent cap to 3% or 80% of the CPI. There is a CPI example in your binder that we'll get to, so we can go through that if you have some questions. And that's, that rent increase is allowable once every 12 months and that CPI is posted annually and we'll get to that in a minute. The ordinance also allowed for petition provisions from both landlords and tenants in the event that a tenant felt aggrieved and wanted to file a petition stating that the landlord was out of compliance. And then landlords also have the opportunity to file petitions for a fair return and a capital improvement. And we'll get into those in a bit, but samples of those petition applications are in your binder as well. Let's go to now the purpose. So first again, thank you for being on the board. This is a vital component to see in this ordinance all the way through and into fruition. So the purpose of this board obviously is to administer and enforce the City of Santa Ana's rent stabilization and just cause eviction ordinance. Your responsibilities are detailed in the municipal code, chapters eight and chapters two, but everything's really been condensed for you into the Rental Housing Board bylaws. There should be a tab in there, in your binder, that lists all those bylaws. There are also regulations, policies and procedures about the ordinance that are available in your binder. Again, these, these documents are extensive, but they cover every single aspect. And if you have questions throughout your process as being a board member, it'll be a great reference for you to refer to instead of having to find these things online. They're all available online, but I know maneuvering through a website isn't always the easiest thing. So we put them all in a binder for you. If there are changes to any of these documents as you serve, you'll get updated documents to replace those old ones. So your powers and duties. So of course, the first responsibility is to hold monthly meetings. The ordinance states, or the rules and regulations state that you'll hold meetings once a month on Wednesdays at 4:30 in council chambers. You as the board, after you have elected your chair and vice chair, can make a motion to change that to another date and time if it meets the needs of your board. Has to pass by a majority and we'll get to that in a minute. But that is your first responsibility is to hold monthly meetings. And then you also have a obligation, if chosen, to hear all of the petitions and the appeals to the decisions of the petitions. Currently, city staff and RSG staff are handling some of the petitions and we'll get into those in a bit, what that entails, because it really is quite complicated and lengthy of a process and it's gonna take a lot of time. So you really have to decide if the board wants to hear those because they do take 90 to two hours just for the hearings. And there's a lot of legal complications as well. So annually, you'll also review the staff levels of the department to make recommendations if more staff is needed. And then you will also, any other designated duties by the city council, it won't be a shock to you, it'll probably something you request that you want to amend, some sort of provision in the ordinance to give you additional duties or rearrange certain aspects. So that in a nutshell are your powers and duties. I did wanna get into then the membership process. So you've all been selected by your council members. I don't know which one of these three categories you fall into, whether you're a tenant, a landlord, or at-large, but the board will make up three tenants, two landlords and two at-large. The requirements are you have to be a resident of the City of Santa Ana, you have to fully disclose financial interests in real estate especially, and then no conflicts of interest in administering your duties as a board member. So in the event that you are out of compliance, you would have to forfeit your seat. The city council member who appointed you would then replace you with another citizen meeting the same criteria. The council members are given the option of who to choose freely, but it is a random lottery process. So they're told essentially, you're gonna pick the landlord, you're gonna pick the tenant, and then that changes every time we need to select a new board member. So essentially, right now, you've all been assigned by your council members. Welcome. You have a four-year term with this board. In the event you can't meet the four years, again, then you can be replaced, but the board at any time can also make recommendations if somebody needs to be replaced for any reason. But really, the council member has the decision on who sits on this board. So, oh, that's right. Compensation. So each meeting, you will receive $100 of compensation and $50 a month for automobile allowance. Maricela will speak with you about how to go through that process. And I guess they can email you, Maricela? Yeah. And she'll talk to you about that. So a few of the other things that you're going to do today are select a chair and a vice chair. Your chair and your vice chair work as the leadership of the board. They hold, the chairperson will actually be in charge of running the meeting. You've seen similar to the mayor's role of oversight of the meeting, but everybody's an equal member of the board. There are additional responsibilities we'll get into about the board chair and vice chair so that you can make a decision on whether or not you want to and who you wanna select for those roles. So you are required to attend training, which you're doing today. If you decide to listen to the petitions and appeals, there will be additional training so that you understand the legal complications or legal consequences with hearing petitions and appeals. So absences, we already talked about that. So if you are going to be absent, you must let the Recording Secretary know, which is Bianca right now, and her email and her contact information will be provided too if it's not already in your contact info. And then your board members will decide, or will vote to excuse you from that meeting. Unexcused absences, they're understandable, but failure to, or if you miss two consecutive meetings, you can be removed from the board. And it's just, obviously, everybody has things to do. 4:30 is a busy time, out of courtesy to your other board members too. You'll keep each other informed, but Bianca will be the one you contact about your absence because it may determine whether or not a quorum is available, whether or not to even have the meeting. So please consider that in the future. And then if you're absent and you miss a meeting, you can participate in future discussions about those comments, but you are going to be required to review the meeting video and then all the documentation that was submitted regarding that item. The next set we wanna talk about is the meetings. So you are going to have regular meetings and special meetings. Special meetings can be called by city council, the board, or city staff. There could be an outstanding item that needs the board's attention right away. Maricela will let you know, or Bianca will also notify you. Anytime you wanna call a special meeting as a board though, please remember that you have to provide 48 hours of public notice for any meeting. So you are a judicial board that needs to provide notice. A vote at any of these meetings require a quorum. So there's four of you here, your quorum, that's why you can do the voting on the chair and vice chair officer positions today. So just remember, if you are going to miss because there are only four of you right now, let the team know so that we can decide whether or not to even have the next meeting. Okay, now we're gonna get into some rules. So Robert's Rules of Order are, there is a copy in your binder. The agenda that you were provided follows Robert's Rules of Order clearly. Robert's Rules require a call to order, pledge of allegiance, roll call. If there's a conflict, this is when a board member would announce they have a conflict with an issue or a landlord or a petition, whatever it may be, you're gonna approve your minutes at the next meeting. And any special items, you'll do business, appeals, et cetera. And there are two items that you cannot ever change out of order and that's the open and the adjournment. So those always have to be at the beginning and at the end, but you can change the sequence of agenda items by a majority vote of the board. Oh, and the Brown Act. So the Brown Act is a California law that governs meetings conducted by local jurisdictions. So the Brown Act requires these meetings be public, they require assessability, and they require public notice about the meetings. And the public has an opportunity to always speak at, at these types of meetings. So any city board meeting does require a few statutory requirements. So again, in your planning, as you think about whether you're going to have special meetings, remember that you have to do all the special notice requirements as well. The Brown Act also guarantees the right for public to address and transparency and openness. So another really key important component is ex parte communication. Communication is not just speaking to people face-to-face, it is also over the phone, internet, email, cell phones. Please avoid any board business communication with anybody outside of the board and with any tenants and landlords who may be asking what's happening with the board. Keep all those matters at a board meeting. And again, ex parte includes a lot of different types of mediums. You know, casualties, hellos, goodbyes, that's always, pleasantries are fine, just conversations about any board matters, please avoid them. And neutrality. So one of the key components, when you're addressing anybody from the public who may be here with a complaint for landlord, tenant, et cetera, is that you want to hear them, but you have to maintain your neutrality, the emotion. You know, this isn't based on your experiences or what you think, it's based on what the law says and what the ordinance says and what you've been trained and what the rules and regulations are. You're here to enforce those. So we ask that you please remain neutral when talking to both landlords and tenants regardless of your own personal experience or, or belief. All right, let's get into petitions, appeals and hearings. So you do have copies of all the types of petitions in your binder. And the three types are a fair return petition, and that allows a landlord to petition for an increase over the 3%. And they have to list the reasons why they think the 3% is not fair. So they, they can list a number of things, rents, they've had low rents, it can be a number of things. There is also a capital improvement petition that a landlord can file. The capital improvement are for large improvements. Let's say they decided to add a pool and a tennis court to the, to the complex, that would be a benefit and there would be an allocated amount that the landlord can charge the tenant for use of that improvement. It's very complicated, there's a lot of analysis done on those because we also count the depreciation value, aggregate value, there's a lot of factors that go into it, but I just want you to be aware of the two landlord types. And then there's the tenant petition, which the tenant can at any time say the landlord's in violation of the ordinance based on the number of reasons listed in the petition. So currently, city staff is handling the tenant petitions and most of those, if not all, are going to mediation, which is a good thing. We were hoping to get mediation up and running a while back, but it sounds like you're doing it now. So again, for the time being, there is a hearing officer hearing all of the petitions that go to an actual hearing. In your, in your binder, there is a copy of a hearing result or hearing decision. Very important that you read that to understand what the requirement is. If you do decide as a board to take over listening to the petitions, you're required to complete that hearing decision. And they can be complicated, it does have some legal jargon. The city attorney helps in the final presentation of a document. I encourage you, if you're considering as a board to hear those petitions, read the decision that's gonna be required of you should you take on that role. But for the time being, the hearing officer who is under contract with the city is hearing all of those, all of those petitions. And so in the event of an appeal, again, same thing, you as a board can select to listen to the appeals. Somebody's not happy with the hearing officer's decision, they can bring it to the board. Same type of process though, you'll be hearing evidence that either wasn't effectively presented or is new evidence that should have been included. It has to include substantial evidence though in order to appeal. But again, if you want to take on that role, look at the appeal decision so that you can see what that would require of your, of your board. Okay, so I wanna get into your training materials, which there are a lot. So in your binder, you should have the rent stabilization and just cause eviction ordinance. Does anybody read it? Okay. Yeah, it's, this is the most current version and I do encourage you to read it, it's 38 pages long, but it gets into the nitty-gritty details of what the ordinance says and, and it'll give you a little insight on what the expectations are of the board members also. You also have the bylaws of your board, the regulations, policies and procedures, again, a very voluminous document, but well worth reading because it breaks everything down into the process, the steps of each, each component in enforcement of the ordinance. And then you have some other very useful documents, the California Tenant Protection Act, Mobile Home Residency Law, which is going to change in 2026, '27. So mobile homes, which are currently exempt from some components, will no longer be exempt from the ordinance, that's coming down the road. When that gets closer, you'll get more training on what that means, but that'll again, include more people who are, who can benefit from the ordinance. The Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act is also in there, that's, that's important, you'll hear that or read that throughout the ordinance, the bylaws, throughout most of the documentation, these ordinance are based on what the state has already done with, with Costa-Hawkins and AB 1482. So you also have Robert's Rules of Order in there and there's a miscellaneous tab that has a lot of those, the notices that are required. Again, there's a lot of documentation and a lot of requirements of this ordinance. Landlords are required to notice the tenant's whether a property is exempt. And those notices, everything from the rent increase, the maximum allowable rent increase again is another notice that goes out, the city calculates by June 30th what the maximum allowable rent increase is effective September 1. And they get those few months so that they can do the proper notification. So a lot of timelines you'll see, and if you have questions about those timelines, feel free to reach out to Maricela or city staff, they, they know the ordinance like the back of their hand now. Or Mike, call Mike. So again, your work-study materials are in there, staff contact information is in there. Bianca, I didn't put your info on there, I apologize, but she is on your agenda. So you can probably look her up on the city's website and get her email address. Again, you will contact Bianca for absences. And any questions, refer to Maricela as the division manager, but other staff, she may refer you to other staff with other questions. There's loads of resources. I didn't wanna bombard you with everything in that binder, it's thick enough, but I do recommend you subscribe to the Rent Stabilization Newsletter. Maricela will send you a link after the meeting to your email so that you can sign on it, it talks, it talks about all your decisions. So and the active and who the board is, so you just may want, wanna be on that list. Policies and procedures, you have those in your binder, but all of this information, like I said, is available online, but it's in your binder for quick reference today. So I'm gonna open it up for questions before you, we stop the study session and go into the business portion during the, your first item of your business is your election of chair and vice chair. So we wanted to give you an opportunity to ask any questions before we step into the real business. Any question? Yes?
What was your name again?
I'm Cindy Blot, B-L-O-T.
I have a question about underpowers and duties. It says may include hearings on petitions. By may, do you mean it would have to be up to us to vote and decide as to what we'd be doing? Or will the board be able to vote to not do that?
The vote, the board will decide whether or not they hear or they want to take over the responsibility of the hearings or the appeals or whatever it may be.
Okay.
So at this point, it's with a hearing officer. Everything goes to either city staff or the hearing officer. If you decide you want to take that on, then we'll schedule a training session for that.
Thank you. And also thank you for the presentation, it was fantastic.
Thank you.
I do have a question though, do you mind pointing where in the ordinance it says that the board have the option to choose that they can hear those petitions?
It would be in your, maybe I do need to find, I believe it's in your, your policies and procedures or the board bylaws? Let me see. Yeah, I'd have to find it. If you give me, I wasn't, I don't have the exact spot, but it is, it is a choice that the board, the board can make.
That's helpful. I guess I was under the impression that it was one of the absolute duties of the board, but talk about it then in a second.
It isn't an inevitable expectation, but it's so much right now that the hearing officer's been handling, handling those.
Well, with that being the case, would you be able to share how many petitions have been submitted over the past?
Yes, I can. So that's a really good question. So there have been a total of 57 petitions submitted since the ordinance went into effect. 22 of those have gone to a hearing officer and I don't have the appeal numbers, the accurate appeal numbers, but as far as the, and that's primarily landlord, landlord petitions, a few tenant petitions, because the tenant petition number has gone down because city staff is working with the landlords and the landlords and the tenants to get those to mediation. That number would be higher, but because of their efforts, thankfully, it gets out of the hearing and into, well, where it should be, right? A discussion between the landlord and the tenant about how to make this work.
Yeah, that sounds like good news. One more question, would you be able to share what the ratio was in terms of petitions submitted by landlords and petitions submitted by tenants?
Yeah, I have, I don't have the ratios, but I definitely have the numbers. So fair return petitions were twenty-three, capital improvements were seven, and tenant petitions were twenty-seven. And again, the average time for a hearing is ninety minutes to two hours. So it does take, does take some time. You have to swear in people. And then the decision honestly takes the most time. So I do recommend you read what a decision looks like to determine if you elect your chair, your chair will be responsible for putting that together.
What's the average length of time for a resolution of a petition? From from when it's initiated to when it's?
So again, these are completed petitions. I'm going to say that so fifty-seven were submitted, only twenty-two made it to hearing because most of them are not complete. So it just takes time, it can take up to six months to get even from petition submission to a complete petition because quite often they don't include all of the information. Then when they send it, it's stale dated because we need things within a reasonable time. So it can, very rare has a petition been submitted completely accurate and ready to go. So it does take usually a month or so to get the actual petition complete. And then it must be heard by the hearing officer once it's complete within thirty days.
When you say that very rarely they're submitted completely, is that because there's a lack of information on how to complete these petitions or?
Well, the petitions are very easy to understand. But I think it's people don't think that information's relevant. And it is because we have to analyze everything. So they'll submit maybe something that supports their case, but doesn't really give us the rest of the answer. Or they'll give us figures, but we, like for a landlord, if they're claiming certain expenditures, we can't just take the word for it. So they'll submit the numbers, but not copies of all the expenditures, canceled checks, things like that. Those are required, and that's detailed in the petition, but they have to submit those. And so that can take some time, or they just don't want to provide it and we can't move forward with it. So I don't want to say there's one thing that they all forget, or we would correct that. It's just various items they forget to include.
Got it. Thank you.
If I may add, we are working, our hearing officer is a law firm. And so there is a lot of law and information, legal information, a lot of ramifications once they establish a decision. So once you take a look at the documentation you have before you, you will see and read how they base their decision. So I want you to take that in consideration.
And any other questions before you close the work session? Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, if it's a pleasure of the board, unless you want to take a break, we can move on to the business calendar. Now is a time for consideration of the hearing or the election of officers. We would like to elect a vice chairperson and a chairperson. The chairperson would serve as the arbiter and they would handle all the business of the chair, open, adjourn, and would basically function the way a mayor would in in the city council setting. And so we can take from the members, we can hear nominations, you can nominate yourself, you can nominate a fellow board member. So now is that time. So we like to, we'll start with the chair. What's that? So there is a nomination for Tracy Law for chair. Okay, is there a second for that?
A second.
Second, okay. Take a roll call? Okay, and then there was a nomination for Mr. Aguilar or was it, oh, for Ms. Meyer? And is there a second? Roll call?
Okay, if you say I for nomination for chair, Tracy Law, and I didn't hear who's second. Thank you. And for vice chair, we have Louise Meyer, and we in second. Ernie, thank you. And all those in favor said aye.
Aye. Can we have a discussion? What are the terms for the chair? Is it the entire length of the board?
The term is one year.
One year?
Yes.
That's what I've been trying to clarify.
And we usually do the election every July, and it starts August first through June thirtieth. And then in July, obviously, we do the the new election.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So any opposed? All those in favor? Okay, we pass. Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, we're turning the meeting over to you, Chair Law. All you get, all you have to do now is in the business calendar and ask if staff member have any comments. And then item six is the board member comments.
Okay, so we're going to close the business calendar. Does do staff have any comments?
Staff does not have any comments. Congratulations on your nomination.
Thank you.
I I will make a comment that I want to thank my staff who have been diligently working on the rent stabilization implementation. They've created a division within the community development department. They've been working diligently with our consultants and efficiently spending the money that is generated from the rental registry revenue. They've also been looking at other ways that they can do, because it's a rent stabilization division. And the way we look at it is one function of rent stabilization is rent control. And that there are other ways that you can stabilize the rental community within the city of Santana. So they're exploring outside funding sources to undertake stuff like eviction prevention and and other activities. How can we lower the cost of living by finding avenues to get to tenants? A lowered cost of food, lowered utility bills. So we look at the rental stabilization division a little more holistically than strictly looking at rent control. And we take the rental housing board very seriously. So we and it is, our hearing officer has been doing a lot of work, the law firm, so we want to thank them as well. And thank you to staff. We had to work with a lot of contract staff for quite some time, and it's been seamless. You almost feel like they're part of our regular full-time and part-time staff at the city of Santana. So thank you to everybody. And that would be the time for board member comments.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. Do other board members have any comments?
The only comment they have is a question or so. So there are several vacancies on the board. What is the city doing to promote or encourage other applicants, or are they still being vetted out by council members?
That's that's our understanding, that council members are vetting vetting board members to serve in the capacity. Because we only have four seated board members, we need a hundred percent attendance at the meetings in order to have a quorum. During the conduct of rental housing board meetings, if you need to take a break, we will need to take a break as a board. So I was ready during the training in case anybody had to take a break to make sure that we, you know, stop because that will effectively stop the board meetings. But then, but we can do that recess and and read adjournment is always possible during the day. There will be times during the rental housing board meetings in the future where you're actually hearing and and going into lengthy, lengthy meetings. There will be times where you may need to take a recess. Those are always available to the board, so.
And to expand on your question regarding what we're doing to continue, we're continuing to promote through our newsletter and request applications. So we're still in the process of that.
Thanks, Maricela. Any others? Awesome. Well, I'll just close. Firstly, thank you so much, everyone on on staff for everything you've done to get us to this point. I know it's been a lot of hard work and many of us are excited to see what we can accomplish as a board. So I look forward to working with you guys, and I think it's going to be a good year. Thank you.
So if there's a motion to adjourn, we can.
I moved to adjourn.
A second. Cool, thank you.
We're going to get you a gavel.